Much for working with us on the schedule. Next item on the agenda, item D is consider approval of floor plans. The commission, as you may remember, has been looking at opportunities to make some improvements with ARPA funding, which is COVID-related funding that we have in hand. And we have limited time to move forward. We have to obligate funds by a certain deadline, expend the funds by a certain deadline. We're well within in those parameters, so we're in good shape, but we do need to move forward on some things. Most recently, we've looked at an improvement on this building. The bids came in so high that we rejected those bids, so we we have to make a decision on what we may do there at this point. That's not decided. But the next project in line was on improvements at the jail, some new wing at the jail specifically geared towards medical administrative offices. I think there were four offices, the medical wing and then a work release section. And those are priorities that the sheriff, the jail administrator and other staff have brought to the table and put a lot of work into. Commissioners are certainly aware of that, and we need to consider moving forward on that and approving those floor plans as proposed by the architect, so we can take next steps, which would be going to bid. Commissioners, what are your thoughts on that?
After we met with architect, what was it, last Friday? Was that right? Talking with them and the paper from IAC that come down, I think that's our best option right now, to go ahead and, like you said, approve the plans to get them out for a bid, just to see what this cost comes back as.
Well, you know, his original proposal was like two and a half times the amount of money that we wanted to allocate to this. So we sent him back to the drawing board and the sheriff worked closely with him over the last three or four months, I suppose, maybe six months almost. And they've come in with kind of a bare bones facility that does the things that they deem most appropriate at this time, the things that I've mentioned. So there's a, are you making a motion to move forward approving these plans?
I have a question, please.
Let's see if we get a second on it first, and then we'll take questions and comments. Yes, is there a second to move to approve the plans for some proceeding to a bid? All right, we have a motion and second, so now let's discuss.
Um, my question is, was really to Karen, I believe, that is there any cost involved with this part of it?
Yes, ma'am, anytime the architect is doing work of any kind, including the bidding, there is a cost associated with it.
But we don't have any idea what that'll be?
I think the contract was like eight point eight percent of the time. Morgan was looking into some of that for me from this last project. Um, Morgan, do you remember? I know we were gonna look at it again later on to discuss more.
Right, I'm trying to think. There's a table, but I don't remember what the numbers are. There's a contract that we could, yes, there is a cost. It's a percentage. Y'all have already entered into the contract, and that the percentage that the architect receives is based on the cost of work, which is, you know, in part based on floor plans and so, yes.
Okay. I just know that we have spent a good portion of this money already on architectural drawings, plans, specs, whatever has gone with it. But when you're getting up in this amount of money, at some point, we've got to make some decisions. That's just where I'm going with this, because we're wasting money, it looks like to me.
Well, we're moving forward on projects that the commission as a body voted to move forward on, and the only way to move forward on that is either us draw them or the architect. So we can't do it. We don't have the authority. So I don't know that we have any other options than to move forward with the architect. There is cost associated with it, I agree. I'm open to suggestions. Right now, I have a motion and second to advance with this, but what are you thinking? Do you want to propose something?
Well, I understand that there might be another way that we could move forward. I'm not going to discuss it right now, but I think it's something that we should have probably sat down already and discussed. That's where I'm at with that. But I'm not against building what we're talking about, and I know we've got to see where it comes in. It may come in way over bid again, and there we are back where we started. So either way, we're in the same boat.
Yeah, I agree. So maybe, are you referring to something like a design build, where you have a contractor who says through their team they will design?
Maybe so, maybe so.
I guess that that might be a possibility. But at this point, the architect's got a boatload of time and we have a boatload of money spent on developing the plans where we are, and they're, it's not exorbitant fees, they're standard architectural fees, to the best of my knowledge. So I'm not sure what our next option would be, other than we'll vote on the motion that's on the floor. Anybody else have a comment or question on that? Anybody? Do you have any comment on where we are? Not to put you on the spot.
No, I'm just trying to think through what Kusia Holmes was suggesting. I mean, I guess the only thing that I can say is to where you are now, you have engaged the architect on the three potential projects. I'm not sure of the status of the engineering building, but the jail addition and the administrative addition that y'all discussed at the last meeting were all part of that one contract. So if you were to decide to move forward in a different direction, we'd need to look at terminating the contract that was entered into, I think, maybe in 2023, I believe it was.
That's right.
So just, I mean, yes, you have options available to you, but you're under contract now, so we would just need to figure out how you would want to proceed and terminate the contract.
Through our association, Association of County Commissions, there, we signed on for them to provide administrative oversight to our projects on them, and they sent to a recent meeting with the architect, they sent two gentlemen who would be project managers, so that are in the business of construction, and they were able to sit at the table with the architect, ask, raise questions, hear answers and explanations, express concerns where appropriate, and work through those between those gentlemen. And so I think that that put us in a much stronger position than where we may have been thirty days ago. But I do think it's appropriate to move forward. We have a motion and second to that effect. Anything else? I don't want to cut the discussion short. All right, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. All right, it's two to nothing. I didn't hear Lynn vote, but at least it was passed.
Yes, I said aye, you just didn't hear.
Okay, I didn't hear it, so it passed. So we'll move forward with that. And what that is, the steps, we're asking the architect, we're approving these proposed plans, and we're asking the architect to move forward requesting bids. And so we'll get bids in and see what the, you know, what that looks like within our anticipated budget. And just to be open with you on the anticipated budget, we had seven point two million dollars of ARPA funding. We have expended a couple of million dollars of that at this point. Maybe we need to give an update at the next meeting.
But that's not an architect's funds, a million went.
No, it went to roads and bridges, it went to a trail project. It's gone to supplemental pay for employees. We, you know, I mean, it's, the money has been expended on just a multitude of things. Architectural fees have been part of that. We can reflect those fees towards these projects we're referring to. But we have already moved to a bid, so all the way to the point of a bid on the first project that we were pursuing, and we rejected that just because it came in double the cost that had been estimated. But let's get an update on that at the next meeting. But I think that the commission would say that we anticipate this project at the jail coming in at, what number do you have in mind, Michael?
Probably three point six to four million.
We hope three point six to four million dollars, and I think we're all kind of expecting and hopeful for that. Let's see where the numbers are, so.
I'd like two million.
We'd like two million. I'd be even better with it, so pray for that. Okay. All right, we passed on that. Consider petition for refund of local sales use tax for a company called MiniMed, and I'm gonna, MiniMed Distribution Corporation. I'm gonna ask Karen again to give us the rundown on this.
Okay, this letter came in the mail to us on Friday. It's a request the Avenue had received from MiniMed. They had filed a petition to get a refund of overpaid sales tax from January 17th to February 2018. They were denied, MiniMed was denied the petition because it was not timed, on time, timely filing. And so there is an option, I guess, to appeal it through you as the board, if you would like to allow this petition to go through.
So according to the letter from Avenue, who administers sales tax collections on behalf of Covenant County by contract, under contract, Avenue states they're aware that KPMG, who is a large county firm, has distributed letters on behalf of MiniMed Distribution Corporation to the Covenant County Commission. Are you aware of those letters from KPMG?
No.
We're not sure where they are. We've not seen those. But these letters assert that Avenue failed to properly administer certain refund petitions filed by KPMG for a period of January of 17 through February of 18, so we're looking at about a 13-month period. Avenue says these allegations are incorrect. Avenue's position is that MiniMed's petition for refund of taxes voluntarily paid during this period are time barred. However, KPMG on behalf of MiniMed continues to seek refunds of taxes paid in the amount of $2,381, $2,381. So they're asking us to act on that if we choose to grant the petition for refund or if we choose to uphold the position that Avenue has taken. I don't think that I asked you if you wanted to address this. Do you have any thoughts on it? I know it was submitted to you, but I don't know that you had a chance to review it specifically from a legal standpoint.
From a legal standpoint, you know, I would always encourage you to say that there's a process and that you would want to see everyone follow the process. And so here, this being time barred, I would say you're on good footing to say that the process should be followed. However, this is, you know, this is a situation of an overpayment, and so you may feel that those monies should be returned. Legally, I think you could go either way, or you can make the decision.
I'm asking if we know what the time constraints are for petitioning for refund. The Avenue's position is that they were outside of that petitioning window, right?
Two years, that's what it's in.
It's two years.
Okay.
They were required to submit a notice of bill, it would've been two years from the date of denial.
Well, they petitioned, they petitioned.
Code of Alabama 42A7. Hold on just a second.
I said they were denied six months after.
But Avenue's position is they're outside of that time following that.
Well, but they said it was filed on July the 23rd of 2019, which was within like a little less than an 18-month window from the, so I'm not sure why they. Okay, they're saying that their next step is to submit a notice of appeal to the tribunal, Alabama Tax Tribunal, within 24 months, and that's where they said they failed to submit that. So they didn't appeal to the tax tribunal. So that is an appropriate necessary step.
Three years.
Okay.
Or two years from the date of.
Well, if they haven't done it yet, they're certainly way outside of the 24 to 36-month window to appeal to the tribunal. So commissioners, what are your wishes? What are your thoughts on this? I had originally, I initially thought we should grant a refund because it was overpayment of tax, but if they've gone beyond their original denial and then 36 months beyond that and still have a file with the tax tribunal.
I would stand with Avenue. They're the ones who collect our stuff, so they're gonna be very, very, I would think, in tune with what's going on with it. So I would stand on their half, behind them.
So that's a motion to deny the request for the petition for refund.
I'm second.
Motion and second, the other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, that's denied. Next is consider approval of county levies for alcohol licensing. Page 20 is the schedule that you need to see, commissioners. We've typically gone, we've historically gone with the same amount.
That's right. We usually do the maximum amount of county fees, so that would require no change from our county, if that's the way you wish to proceed. The maximum county fees are listed on the schedule on page 20.
So is there a motion to stay with the current maximum amount or to reduce the licensing fee?
I make a motion.
To stay with the current amount?
Stay with the current amount.
There's a second.
Second.
Questions? Comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, that passed. Next is consider a warning bid for sheriff's department.
Okay, we sent out bids in conjunction with the sheriff or for the sheriff, and we got wound response back, and it was for the item listed on page 21. So has it been the only bid response received?
Really don't want to describe this in our open meeting, but it's, other than to say it's a $3,000 purchase. Is there a motion to approve this purchase?
A motion.
All right. Motion and second. Questions? I assume that was gonna be assigned to the sheriff.
That's correct.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right. Next is consider purchase of equipment for the sheriff's department, more than this $3,000.
That is correct.
Where are you getting all this money, Sheriff?
Actually, this comes from recovered drug money.
All right.
We are wanting to purchase a thermal drone. A drone is apparatus that can, that's used to fly. We currently have an officer that is actually trained in the use of these drones, and we're considering sending two more. The drone is a thermal drone. It's a rather, it's not a real big one, it's small, they can fly it actually into houses if you needed to, but it's thermal so that we could use it for also for recovering lost hunters, lost children, things of that nature. It's a multi-use thing. Also, we'd be able to fly over a property prior to doing a search warrant or a warrant for arrest and actually scope out the area with great accuracy.
Distinguishes between humans and animals?
It'd be a shape, you know, so if a man's standing there.
Like a pack of dogs, we could find them.
Right.
Lord have mercy.
We have a lot of good uses that we can, we can use it for.
What requirements do you have to have for this FAA?
You have to have an FAA license, which may, someone has to go through the course and acquire the license, which Deputy Wiggs, one of our deputies, already has that. Once the, once the, once the drone is purchased, then we can use, put the serial number for the, for the insurance, and we'll also assign, it will be assigned a FAA number, just like you would on an airplane, and it will be posted on the, on the machine itself.
So the request that you're submitting is for this thermal basic plus $5,326, is that correct?
That's, that's, that's about, that's about right.
How often have you needed a drone?
We've actually, we have, we have used someone's drone, usually it's Mr. Eddie Rowell, when we're looking for lost kids. We would like to be able to have this drone as, to be precaution. You know, we could actually use this drone, if you have a house where someone is held up or possibly in distress, and you can enter the house, you could actually use this drone to go in there and scope out the house. It's pretty neat. The drone is designed where if it was coming toward this microphone and it got too close, it's not gonna hit that microphone, it'll go around it and get back on course.
Can it open the door or?
No, it can't open the door.
I know you're joking, right?
But there's, but there's, but there are lots of options you can get for this drone, but we're just, we're just, the thermal and the camera capabilities is really all we're into.
And you're wanting extra batteries as well?
Yes, that, that should be with the, with that packet.
Are there privacy restrictions with something like this? I mean, you're open to use it anywhere you need to, want to, or?
There, there are some restrictions. You can't fly it over the jail. Matt, as a matter of fact, nothing can fly over the jail. Even the drones, civilian drones, there's actually a wall, and that's part of having this FAA license and everything. As far as privacy concerns, we're not gonna use that in such a way that we don't already have a warrant in hand.
Okay. That was really what I want to know.
Right, we're gonna have a warrant in hand, and the only time that we would use it and not have a warrant in hand, it would be in a matter of life and death, a stranded hunter or lost child. Elderly, that's, that's correct.
Does the state offer any training whatsoever for these?
I'm not aware of the state offering any. Huntsville Police Department does. They have a huge drone program. We have, I've looked into getting some training and also some guidelines for policy from them, but as far as training is concerned, it's basically sending them to get their, their credentials to be able to fly the machine. Anybody can fly a drone. I mean, you can get on eBay and buy you a drone and go fly it anywhere you want to, but for law enforcement purposes, we have to go by the book, so we have to have the proper licenses and all that in place.
Insurance, in case somebody shoots it out of there.
Insurance, that's right.
So, you know, just estimating that there'd be another couple thousand, three thousand in training, so we're looking at maybe an $8,000 commitment?
At most, at most. I don't, I don't, I don't see the training being that much.
Where are we proposing to purchase this? Is it in your budget or law enforcement?
I'm gonna use, I'd like to use forfeited funds.
Okay, which is outside of the budget, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this purchase?
Make a motion.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
I just don't know how much we're gonna use a drone. That's my concern, and I know it's your, it's the money you have from forfeited funds you're wanting to use, but I just don't, I would love to have got to talk to you a little bit before today, you know, before it come up. I just don't know how much we'll use a drone. I got one you can borrow anytime.
But we don't have the licenses for it. You got a guy who can license?
Could we table this for two weeks? Would that mess you up too much?
No. Let me talk, talk you everything.
Yeah, let's just see.
Okay, so.
About your training, too.
We have a motion, it was never seconded, so there's nothing to table, but we will just bring it back up in a future meeting.
Okay.
All right, anything else that you have for us today?
No, I don't have any.
All right, thanks, Sheriff. Next is consider approval of contract with Diversified Computer Services for some services in the Engineers Department. We'll ask Lynn to come up and present this, this item to us. Lynn, if you will. So if you will tell us about Diversified Computer Services and what they offer, what you're proposing here on item I.
Well, the cost I go and tell you is about $9,600, $9,800 a year for this service. It's like an annual subscription, and they maintain, they maintain the site, they add things as it's needed, blue book rentals. We had a little presentation here, I guess, two weeks ago, I guess it was, Karen.
Well, tell us generally what it does, the overall, an overview of what this software will do for you.
It tracks costs per project. It's just more of a management tool for information.
Does it generate work orders?
It generates work orders. You can track if you've got a project, if you've got equipment on, like I say, it kind of directly ties into our GPS units we'll be getting from them. So if you've got a job, it can track the cost when that equipment was actually there on the job, but it's just a great informational tool. You can query a lot of, a lot of stuff to make, it'll make Kip's life a lot easier as far as tracking costs. He can do it already, this just simplifies a little bit more. But I think it's a great tool. I think the commissioners that sat on the meeting, they saw the benefit of the program.
I have to say, we did get to sit in the meeting and watch the demo, or the demo, whatever you wanna call it. But I think it'd be a great tool for the commissioners down the road also, because like you said, you can actually take pictures of a problem, someone calls you that has it, where Lynn don't have to go right then, or somebody go right then, and submit it with a work order.
Yeah.
And then you can track your work order all the way down to see when it was actually inspected, when the work took place, so on and so forth. But then again, like you said, from, from your side with Kip over there, with where they can break out the cost, like I, I thought it was a good idea. I think it's a good idea, and I'm gonna make the motion just because of what it can do for the commissioners themselves.
Yeah, a lot of times we're having, I have to sit there and go back through a hundred texts.
Yeah, because a lot of times, like the time I'll text me with a, with a problem, well, now he can physically go online on the, on the app and request the work order, and I can pull it up every day and see if that work order's been, it won't go away until it's been done.
And we can check it, too.
Yeah.
And the good thing is, it takes a little bit of stress off Lynn from the Irish standpoint, because all of a sudden this morning, it's raining, I may call Lynn about a road, two minutes later, Tom may call him about a road, and then I may call him again, then Lynn calls him again, then 10 minutes, well.
Yeah.
Inundated with a ton of.
Yes.
Not me, I go see him.
So.
She does.
So I hear a motion to approve this purchase, is there a second?
Second.
For this contract. There's a motion and second. Questions, additional questions, comments?
How long before we can implement it?
Just as soon as we get it going. We gotta get approval, we can get a purchase, purchase order and get it, get it, get it going, so.
I noticed this contract was up in September, so I guess, and then we'll renew, I guess, if we like it.
Yes, ma'am.
So that gives us a good time to kind of see how it works out.
And we've come up, I think, I think 50 GPS units for our, our department. Ron and I went back, I think we had 49, but I added one back to it. I thought we needed one more piece added that he didn't have added, so.
And this is also the same units that we was talking about. You could track, like I said, if your bushhogs is working.
Yeah.
You can see where the bushhogs have been and.
Yes.
Where your rug rakers are.
All right, so we have a motion and second. If there's nothing else, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, that's approved. Report from your department for us?
And I was out last week sick. I'm getting better, but still battling some issues, but I'm getting, getting over it, I hope. But we're about completed with our, we're at Connecticut Sausage out there that we've been helping a little bit with. Our, we got some pipe put in on our Cross Mary Road project yesterday, as a matter of fact. The rain had not got to stay, would've been working again out there more than it. Our 107 project, I got our plans at the state, they're reviewing the turnout plans, so when I get those back, we will put it out to bid. I'm gonna go ahead and start making our tie-in on the 107 in now. I was putting barricades up. A lot of people are using that road coming through there, but I, we're gonna get the pipe put in and get the road based, so when they get ready to make the two ties, we'll pave the remainder of the project. So we've, we've put a lot of topsoil out on all of our paving projects we had from our ARPA funds on some of our commissioners' projects. We've done a lot of broadway clearing for our upcoming and pipe replacements on our new rebuild, resurfacing projects. We're doing that as well, so. But we're fixing to get geared up, start bushhogging here soon. Our herbicide spraying is about complete for what we're doing right now, and then we'll start back our bushhogging as well, so.
Anybody have questions for Lynn?
Yes, what's the status on the deed deal with the cost?
I'm gonna look, I was out in the field all day yesterday, I'm gonna check with Mark Murphy on that. As far as I know, I answered all the questions that Lynn on her head, and I feel we're, I feel very confident on that, and we may have an answer on my email when I get back, so.
All right, thank you, Lynn. Glad you're feeling better.
Yep.
Glad to have you back. All right, reports from other staff, departments? CATS?
CATS is Wayne, here back from the state. Two of the vans have been sold to the regular paperwork.
Good, okay, good deal. Kevin, you have anything? If you have any leaks, they'll show up today, won't they?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, commissioners, anything else?
Yes, sir. We have not made any, that I'm aware of, decisions about what we're going to, about the hiring at the arena. I know that that's got to be taken care of. I think we did talk about it just a little bit at the last meeting, so I'm gonna let Ms. Salwell tell us where we are.
Well, we're hoping to get that out this week if y'all approve. Right now, we have it listed for a contractor instead of county employee. I feel like that would be a better cost savings for the county and get the job done better. There was a comment time if y'all had anything that y'all knew of, and I didn't hear from anyone with any concerns or anything, so I'm assuming.
The only thing was, but we can address that issue later on if something that, me and Greg attended the meeting, takes place later on, we can always come back and address. You know, the only thing, I say, okay, we do a six-month or a year contract, and I would probably say for a year.
Right.
And then look at it.
That would be my recommendation as well.
Look at it at the end.
And with the option to renew and have that clause in, in the.
So currently, without, without a motion to the contrary, we're gonna move forward on the, as, for contract services and we're, what that entails is a request for proposals from interested parties and then we'll, uh, see what they're proposing is way, in the way of service provided and in the way of fees associated with that service, and then we make a decision. Alright.
So let everyone know that we'll be looking for a manager.
How long will you have to run it?
Um, I'm thinking probably two to three weeks, um, hopefully we'll push it out, maybe the newspaper can help us. And, um, maybe we can get it out to the media, we can get some.
And there's several events coming up that we've got to have somebody in place.
Absolutely. And, uh, Lynn's guys and Kevin's guys have, have really stepped up and have offered help as they can, but it's only a certain amount of stuff that they could really do without having someone down there.
So we need to move on it quickly.
Yes.
Alright, so we have, we have a contract in place at this point and for the last five or six years.
Could we see a copy of that contract sometime?
I'm sorry?
Would we see a copy of that contract sometime? Cause I don't.
I got, I got a copy.
Have you got it?
The, so the services for managing, not really managing the arena, but setup and breakdown of the arena and being available during events has been handled on a contract basis. So the discussion was whether to move to an employee or whether to stay with a contract, and at this point, we're moving forward with a, a proposal, uh, to, to contract it. And we'll see what kind of interest there is in that, so.
You want to just say for two weeks and see if we can get everybody in by the next?
I would love to, I've had several people have already reached out, so I've got a little list going of everyone that I'm gonna try to notify to make sure they're aware since they've expressed interest, and if anyone were to contact us even now, we'd definitely push it out as soon as we re- receive it. We're eager, we want someone quickly and someone that will be, um, continue on our goal for the arena.
Karen, is it on our website?
It will be once they, once the blessing's there.
Yes.
So we give it your bl- we give it our blessing, okay?
That's what I need, that's what we need to do.
You got it.
Any, any other questions, commissioners or comments, any issues that you want to bring up, Ms. Morgan, do you have anything?
Yes sir.
Alright, Karen?
I have nothing at all.
With nothing else, we stand adjourned, thank all of.